I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role and establish your quorum?
Yes. Good afternoon, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Very good. If you can please recite our statement.
Yes. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded and closed captioned. It is cable cast on, excuse me, cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, April 27th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes, and the remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. And if you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk staff for assistance or contact us at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
All right. Thank you very much. Crystal, will you please do us the honor of leading us into the pledge?
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone who has joined us here in chambers for this afternoon's Board of Supervisors meeting. We have a one-item agenda essentially, and we'll get to business here shortly. Again, just as a friendly reminder to any member of the public who would like to address the Board on any matter that is on or off of our agenda, you certainly are welcome to do so. We ask that you kindly respect a two-minute time limit on your speaking time. That way, everyone who wishes to address the Board has that opportunity. So with that, Madam Clerk, our first item.
Our first item are public comments related to matters not on the posted agenda, and so far right now, we have two speakers. Our first speaker is LaShawna Gores.
Yes, okay.
And just as a reminder, as LaShawna approaches the podium, for those items that are not posted on our published agenda, we can certainly hear you and welcome your testimony. We cannot have any lengthy discussion nor act on it.
I'm sorry, I've never done this before.
That's all right. You're amongst friends. Don't be nervous.
Good afternoon, County Board. My name is LaShawna Gores. While I have been attending past county board meetings since early April, as a way to volunteer for the Social Justice Politic Corps, I am speaking to you today, not as that, but actually I'm speaking as a very concerned autistic resident of Sacramento County. During yesterday's county board meeting, during the recess before the meeting resumed at 2:00, I received news that RFK Jr. and NIH was planning on creating what's called a disease registry to track autistic people. Now, the data that is being collected, some of it, but not all, includes medication records from pharmacies, lab testing and genomic data from the VA and Indian Health Service, the Indian Health Service, private insurance claims, and smart watch and fitness tracker data, as well as, and they're also planning on expanding NIH access to the data of Medicare and Medicaid recipients. I know there's already concerns being voiced out by the autistic community that not only does this registry have the potential to violate HIPAA, but much more importantly, this registry that is, this registry of autistic people could be used in the future to, for the federal, to help the federal government hunt down autistic people and send them off to camps like they did in Nazi Germany. This is, I know this is like fear mongering, but not only has the federal government proved time and time again that they are not willing to act, to protect, they're not, not only they're not willing to, they're not willing to act in ways to protect civil rights and the safety of the American people. RFK Jr.'s and other people being involved in this project of theirs already have a history of anti-vaccine, anti-science, and eugenicist rhetoric. My question, what I and other disabled people need to know, while taking into account that the state government might have to do a lot of the things that need to be done, I need to know if there are any actions that the county board can and are willing to do to protect the civil rights and safety of autistic people and other disabled people.
Great.
I'm done.
Thank you, LaShawna. You did a great job, and I would like to personally invite you to make an appointment, if you wish to, with my staff, and you and I can have a one-on-one meeting because I'd like to learn more, and maybe there's other members of the Board. We can only have one other member of the Board join the meeting, but certainly want to follow up with you personally. So that invitation is open, and I hope you take me up on that.
I'll think about it.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not used to this.
No, I understand. I understand. You did a great job. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lisa Kirk.
Good evening or afternoon. My name is Lisa Kirk. I was your county representative on the Loc Management Association Corporation Board. I was not reappointed two months ago. You reappointed Morris Lum, who resigned before the first meeting, nor did we ever see him at any meetings previously to that. I have a vested interest in Loc. I have been a business owner up there for 20 years. I'm also concerned about the rights of the non-property owners there, which are business owners and renters, were considered invitees under the bylaws and the CCNRs. And it's really important to keep representation on this board that represents those people. Don Natoli did give us $100,000 before he left to repair walkways. There's many infrastructures in that town that need to be brought up and rehabbed. I would like the opportunity to serve on that board again. Also, on your publications, when you do this, we would like the invitees of Loc to know who you're looking at to reappoint. It was not on the last agenda. So, you know, if we'd have gotten someone like Morris Lum, who I think he didn't want to serve because he didn't want to fill out a 700 form, which is kind of surprising because he serves on state committees, we would have had the opportunity to say something. I do have a petition that's also with my application that has over 50 signatures of people from Loc, from the Delta Chamber, the Isleton Chamber, that support my appointment or reappointment. So I'm just letting you know that I would like to be reconsidered when it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirk. Okay. Does that conclude our off-agenda speakers?
Yes, it does.
All right. Very good. Then we will move on to our next item.
Yes. Item number two, adopt a resolution affirming the Board of Supervisors' direction to staff regarding updates to the county's economic development strategy plan, strategic plan.
Good afternoon, everybody. Chair Serna and Board members. I'm Crystal Bethke, Director of Economic Development for Sacramento County. And today, we are so pleased to present an update on the status of our economic development strategic planning process. And today, we're seeking your input on the draft framework for a five-year plan that's really going to guide our economic development investments and priorities here. Since the county's last economic development strategic plan, which was adopted in 2014, both the organization of Sacramento County, as well as our economy and our local community, have undergone a significant amount of change. With this transition, we really felt like this was an excellent opportunity to renew our office's vision and build on the work that's already underway and accomplished to really create a new strategic direction. Our goal here is to create an updated strategic plan to provide the framework for prioritizing our investments and allocating our resources to support the economic growth and job creation in Sacramento County. So in early 2024, the Office of Economic Development partnered with HRNA Advisors through a highly competitive request-for-proposals process. HRNA was selected because they have over 40 years of local experience throughout the Sacramento region, as well as California, helping create strategic initiatives for not only counties, but cities and special districts. Since launching their work, HRNA has conducted a comprehensive analysis of Sacramento County's economic conditions, including industry and labor market trends, real estate data, and specific challenges and opportunities that we face. A major strength of this process has been our foundation and our community and stakeholder engagement. Our outreach efforts have been very vast and have included one-on-one meetings, focus groups, public community meetings, an online survey, and we have a very dedicated webpage to stay updated on a regular basis so that we can continue to engage with the community. HRNA will go through all the details of that shortly. In addition, we have a 10-member advisory committee, which was convened to serve as a strategic partner throughout this planning process. This committee was composed of a diverse group of cross-sector partners to bring a wide range of perspective to enhance our final strategic plan. Members represent various economic development subsectors such as regional economic development, workforce development, small business, nonprofits, community development, real estate, tourism, arts, and entrepreneurship. I actually have several of them here today that I would like to recognize real quick, but, you know, Chris Norm, Director of Government and Public Affairs with the North State Building Industry Association, Jose Bodepo Memba, the Chief Diversity Officer with SMUD, Carrie Mitskip, the Chief Operating Officer with Visit Sacramento, Kyla Bryant, who is a partner with the Business Development for Luminary Partners, Richard Dana, a partner with Community Strong Strategies, Shelley Willis, who is a public art consultant, Sophia Canon, the Director for the Women's Business Center, Trolls Adrian, the Executive Vice President for the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Troy Givens, Director of Community Development, and our former Director of Economic Development, as well as William Walker, the Workforce Development Manager for the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency. It was really important for us that we gather input and guidance through these various channels that have directly informed the framework that you are going to see today. So this afternoon's presentation is going to include a summary of our preliminary findings and our strategic recommendations at a high level. We want to welcome everyone's feedback, which will be used to refine the final strategic plan, which will be brought back for your approval at a later date. So at this time, I would like to invite up Judy Taylor, who is one of the partners with HRNA Advisors, who is going to walk us through the process. I would like to mention that we're going to open it up for questions throughout each section of her presentation, unless you have any questions for me right now.
No questions for you now. I just want to make mention of the fact that, as is usual, Supervisor Desmond is trying to be in three places at one time today. So, and of course, we want the entirety of our Board to be present for, you know, the supporting subject, the substance of it, but he is our CSAC representative, and CSAC's Ledge Conference is currently underway, and he's got, he has to be, I think, near the Capitol or at the Capitol in about an hour or so.
Yes, sir.
We don't necessarily have to end by then, but I just want people to keep that in mind in terms of perhaps a little more brevity than is normal.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Welcome, Judy. Thank you.
Thank you for that warm welcome, and thank you, Supervisors, for taking the time out of your busy schedules to participate in this workshop. And I think, as Crystal shared, the purpose of this workshop is to share our current existing economic conditions and strategy framework with the intent to capture your input. We really want to ensure that these strategies reflect the needs of residents and businesses that you work with on a daily basis, and that we are able to focus the work of the Office of Economic Development to the areas of most impact. So with that, let me share our agenda for today. So we have a brief introduction to HRNA Advisors, our experience and our process, and then we'll share some detailed information about our outreach and engagement process, and then we'll review our existing conditions, findings, and then finally, we'll discuss the strategic plan framework that really is led from all of these findings that we've gone through. So we would like to quickly introduce you to HRNA, our organization and experience. We've had a chance to connect with you all, with many of you individually, but also just want to make sure that we all have the same context as we begin. So as Crystal shared, my name is Judith Taylor. I'm a partner with HRNA Advisors out of our Los Angeles office. I have over 20 years' experience in community and economic development and real estate. My practice is really focused on equitable economic development, and there, I focus on work, working on projects that aspire to build and strengthen economies while improving the quality of life in communities for existing residents and businesses in addition to new residents and businesses. As a partner in charge in this project, I've worked with Sarah Kirk, who is our project manager, and Ally Paget, who is here and is our deputy project manager. So you'll be hearing from Ally today as well, and she's a senior analyst who's worked on numerous workforce development projects here in California and across the country. And just to share a little bit more about our experience, as Crystal mentioned, I've worked on a number of recent projects in the Sacramento region. Recently worked on the North Sacramento Action Plan, Marysville-Del Paso Forward Together, and that was a project with the City of Sacramento and also with a nonprofit, the Mutual Assistance Network, where we were helping a community-led revitalization strategy for a corridor. We also worked with the Sacramento Council of Governments on the Engage, Empower, and Implement Project, and there, we worked with over 40 different CBOs as they were developing a program to help provide funding to CBOs to better engage in community-led projects. And so those two projects have been recently completed, but in addition to that, we've worked on a number of different projects within economic development, particularly around California Jobs First. So we worked with Policy Link across the state. I actually worked in the Central Valley for the Sierra San Joaquin California Jobs First Project. We have some colleagues in LA who are working with the LA California Jobs First. We've done work with Richem, California, doing an economic development plan there, and we've worked with the City of Los Angeles on their first citywide economic development strategy, and have also been working with LA County with economic development strategies there. So we really have this vast experience working in economic development here in California and across the nation. So this slide illustrates our overall, our comprehensive process for the strategic framework. So we began our work starting with an existing conditions analysis, and there, we've been looking at demographic and economic analysis, looking to understand the county's socio-demographic trends, industry and jobs, and real estate and economic trends to build a SWOT analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and we'll share that with you today. We also have been building, excuse me, we've been building out throughout our process stakeholder engagement, and in the next slide, I'm going to, in the next section, I'm going to detail the stakeholder engagement in more detail. And then using the findings from the existing conditions and our engagement work, we have started building out our strategic framework. And so we've begun to craft the strategic vision for economic development, and we currently have an initial list of preliminary strategies and action steps that we'll share with you today. And with your input, we're going to get to the next step, where we'll find, we'll update those strategies and finalize our economic development strategy report. So going over our outreach and engagement, as Crystal mentioned, our process really included extensive stakeholder engagement. We wanted to hear from economic development partners, the business community, county leaders, and members of the public throughout the process. Crystal described the advisory committee and really that cross-sector group of folks who came out and who've been guiding the process throughout. In addition to that, we've had a set of one-on-one interviews with county-elected officials and the executive team, and we also had a set of eight focus groups where we had more than 50 organizations participate. And then we had a set of three community meetings. Two of them were in-person, and one was virtual, and we had 75 participants across those community meetings. We really wanted to ensure that we were hearing from all different parts of the county, so we also ensured that we were, had those meetings in South County and North County, and that we were, ensuring that we were listening and connecting with folks located in urban areas and rural areas. So finally, that really brings us to this public workshop, and this is an opportunity to connect with you and get your feedback, and also to share out our economic development strategies further with the public.
Excuse me. Supervisor Rodriguez.
A quick question, Judy. Well, actually, I have two. One of them is, can you help me understand the difference of equitable economic development and economic development?
Yes. So I had described, when I talked about equitable economic development, when I think about the equitable piece, I'm focused on ensuring that existing residents and existing businesses get to benefit from those increases in the economy and can benefit in addition to, you know, new residents and new businesses who are coming in. And that's how I define equitable.
Oh, okay.
There are many different definitions.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
And so, you know, I try to provide that clarity about how I think about.
Thank you. And then the other question was, when you had focus groups and you went to several parts of, is it Sacramento County?
Sacramento County with a focus on, a lot of our work focuses on unincorporated Sacramento County, to be clear.
Incorporated, okay. So not including the cities within the county that have probably a separate ED department?
There were, we actually did have a session where we connected with the different economic development partners from those cities. So that was actually one of the focus groups that we had.
Okay, good.
So we did have this variety, so we talked to a variety of different folks in unincorporated counties. We also had the incorporated economic development partners.
Okay, good. Because I see, when I think of economic development and when we talk about thriving communities, and in SAC County, there's a strong partnership between the cities and the unincorporated, so I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. So I did also want to share out what we heard from those different contacts with the public. So, you know, through the engagement, we were really uncovering community concerns and identifying potential areas of focus, and these helped to guide our economic development strategic plan. One of the key things we heard, you know, coming out of the economic development connections that we had was an interest in small business support, particularly demand for more technical assistance and resources for small businesses. And we also heard and understood that there actually are a lot of existing resources at the county, but that there was a lack of awareness of those existing resources. So that was one definitely key piece that you'll see as we go over our strategies later. We heard about, a lot about real estate and infrastructure. Business stakeholders in Sacramento County were often concerned about the high visibility of vacant buildings in unincorporated areas and related perceived blight, crime in retail corridors with those vacant buildings. And so we heard a lot about that, and then we also heard about access to quality infrastructure, specifically around roads and broadband, particularly in more rural locations of the county. In terms of marketing and communications, we heard from several stakeholders an interest in strengthening Sacramento County's communication to showcase its economic capabilities and available resources. And you'll kind of hear that a lot. From the Business and Environmental Resource Center, BERC, and the Small Business Liaison Program, both of those programs exist and are helping hundreds of people and businesses every year, yet there could be more knowledge about these programs across the county and their availability. In terms of workforce development, there's an interest for programs to support opportunities for youth and to access high-quality jobs. We, and in terms of high-quality jobs, you'll hear that term a couple times throughout this presentation, and we're talking about high-quality jobs, we're talking about jobs that are providing a living wage, jobs that, not always, but may have opportunities for benefits. And so that's, that's one of the kind of base definitions for high-quality jobs. Stakeholders also expressed interest in workforce development programs to support emerging industries, and folks also mentioned ensuring that business program resources and trainings are accessible to individuals facing digital literacy challenges, non-English speakers, and those unavailable to attend training during traditional business hours. So just wanted to note that as well. And then finally, but not least, was business attraction. There really was a strong interest in understanding incentives to help keep unincorporated Sacramento County competitive throughout the region. And I do want to mention that both includes both streamlining permitting and development processes to reduce time and cost to attract businesses and prioritizing a simple permitting process, as well as exploring incentives such as grants and other resources. So with that, we want to jump into our existing conditions, and actually, after we review these existing conditions, we'll take some time to kind of pause and see how that, how the findings reflect, if they are reflecting what you're seeing. And I'm going to invite Ally to speak about existing conditions.
Thank you for your time. So I'm going to quickly walk through a snippet of what is a much larger existing conditions report that we can make available if needed. We looked at five key components in our existing conditions analysis. So we looked at the socioeconomic profile of the county and the unincorporated areas, you know, the demographic composition, education levels, et cetera. We looked at the key industries, both in terms of number of jobs, in terms of growth and historic trends. We looked at the workforce and the top occupations in the county, how average earnings have changed over time, and again, which occupations are growing. We looked at the real estate market, so including office, industrial, and retail space, and again, long-term trends, the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the real estate market. And then we synthesized all of this information in a SWOT analysis, as Judy mentioned, so synthesizing these strengths, weaknesses... So synthesizing these strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats within both the overall county and the unincorporated areas.
I have a question before you leave that slide. Go back. So under SWOT, under the SWOT analysis, is that where there's any reference to or acknowledgement of our institutions of higher learning and that relationship with kind of the other general categories here?
Yeah. So we address some of that in the workforce section, looking at the percentage of residents in the county and unincorporated areas that have advanced degrees, whether that's two-year, four-year, or beyond. And then we sort of think about some of that again when we're looking at what the top occupations are that do and don't require a degree and where there might be opportunities for folks who don't have a four-year degree. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does primarily. Any, any consideration whatsoever of kind of the unique dynamic of, and it's, and it's been, I think, part of our existing condition for some time, given our geographic juxtaposition with the Bay Area, brain drain from that neighboring region, especially as it relates to kind of high-tech disciplines, that kind of thing.
Absolutely, yeah. And we looked at a couple of things related to that. One is resident workers and where workers are coming from, possibly outside the region. We have one map in this presentation, and I know we have a few others that we could get you. And a lot of folks are coming up from the Bay Area. We also looked at some of the industries that are developing in the region. So I know ag tech and working lands are one of those. And a lot of that is combining the agricultural strength of Sacramento County with some of that tech knowledge from the Bay Area.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. So starting with an overview and looking at the employment base of the county, Sacramento County and the unincorporated areas specifically are growing quickly and are outpacing statewide growth. So you can see the county has grown 11% in the last 10 years. The unincorporated areas specifically have grown 8%, so a little bit slower, but still outpacing that statewide growth number. And the county and the unincorporated areas both have a solid economic base, in large part due to the government and healthcare sectors, which combined make up about 40% of the area's jobs. And I do want to note specifically for the government sector on this slide and in all of our data, this includes a wider swath than what some data sources use for government. So this includes K-12 education, this includes public colleges and universities, public hospitals. So this really reflects sort of the entirety of the public sector employment, which, as we know, is significant in the region. So moving into our industry and workforce analysis, both the county and the unincorporated areas lack robust tradable sectors. So when we talk about tradable sectors, we're talking about sectors that bring wealth into the community by selling goods and services outside of the community. And tradable sectors are really critical to growing the county's economy and providing benefits for residents and businesses within the county.
Excuse me, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. And I apologize, I may be jumping ahead a little bit or making connections that you're going to speak about later on in the presentation. But this particular bubble map caught my eye related to the pie chart that was on the previous slide. And that is because you're measuring the size of these sectors or their importance relative to jobs and not necessarily economic output.
Yep.
And yet then later in the SWOT analysis, one of the top opportunities is Sacramento County's prominence relative to agriculture. And so I'm just curious if you could speak to the reasoning behind measuring the jobs as opposed to the economic output, or what are we trying to solve for relative to economic development, that this tells us a different story than, say, if this bubble map were based off of, you know, taxable goods?
Yeah, definitely. And I believe we have a version of it that is based off of total revenue, but I'll have to double-check on that. And it's, obviously, it's not in here. In this case, what we're looking at is what are the jobs and opportunities available to people? So obviously, we could also measure that by the revenue of the industries. It shows slightly different top sectors, but since most people in the county are thinking about their opportunities based on a job within a sector, that tends to be the first thing we look at, because that's how most of us think about our opportunities available to us. But Judy, I don't know if you want to add anything on that?
And maybe, Judy, you could also speak to, and is the reasoning behind that, the economic development output of those employed people as opposed to, say, the economic development captured by the county of Sacramento as an agency?
Those are all great questions.
Thank you.
You know, so when we were looking at this, so you can look at output, you can look at jobs, you can look at earnings. They all tend to be somewhat related, though output and earnings can differ, like, you know, they can differ, but they tend to be related and connected to each other. And so that's actually why we went with jobs, which is just, it provides a little bit more clarity about, you know, about the impacts to residents that we're looking at. When we're thinking about tradable sectors, though, you know, tradable sectors being those sectors that are bringing in dollars to the area, you know, we're really trying to understand what are those tradable sectors that are growing. And so we did use jobs versus output, but again, like, they tend to be, there tends to be a direct relationship with it. And so this is getting us that information, like, here on the Y-axis is job growth. And so this is, this is being helpful in telling us what are the industries that are growing? And so that's what the Y-axis helps us to kind of understand. And then the X-axis is the wages, so that is actually like what it means to the residents, which isn't a direct, like, what it means to the county. Those can be different. But it does help to understand from a resident's perspective what's, you know, what's helpful. And then again, the growth does tell us, like, which industries are growing. And then the tradable sector part, like, we're taking information in our understanding that's not actually, I would say, shown in this, in this diagram, to understand what are those tradable sectors. You know, for instance, manufacturing is a tradable sector. You're manufacturing something, and then you're actually going out and selling it. While as construction is, you're building it, it's actually more of a local trade. It still brings benefits to the community, but dollars are bouncing around within the community as opposed to also adding new dollars. And so, you know, there can be different ways to look at all of these pieces, but we decided to look at the jobs route to help us there. So these are not directly related to output, but it does give us an understanding, like, especially if you're looking at that job growth piece, it does tell you what's growing and how we can think about that for Sacramento County. I don't know if that exactly answers your question.
It answers a portion of it, which is, you know, when you get to the strategic plan part later in the presentation, some of this will be sussed out a little better as far as what are we trying to accomplish? And so from an employment standpoint, obviously, this is a very telling graphic. I would argue a little bit that if you had an output base, it wouldn't necessarily track the same, because agriculture is high-output, low-jobs. So it would be, you know, lower on this bubble map, but it would be larger, obviously, influence on a, on an economic sector bubble map. So anyway.
There can be some differences, but this is like percentage of job growth. So it's talking about growth as opposed to the specific point in time. So you're right on that.
Right, right. Thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Judy, I have a question for you. So when, when we have these jobs that we are trying to attract to the, to the region, is there a benefit to a business whether they go to the unincorporated or they go to a city? Is there a perk that comes with being in either one or the other?
So that is actually, I would say, a purpose of the strategic plan, is to clarify and ensure that folks understand what those perks can be. And we're going to talk about incentives later in this conversation. I think right now, for a lot of businesses, there's a lot of confusion about unincorporated versus a incorporated city. And a part of this work is to actually clarify it and provide folks with the direction so that they can understand the trade-offs and the benefits.
Yeah. It made me think of Amazon and their distribution center and the taxable income that comes from it. So a city would want that taxable income, whereas right now, say, if it goes to the county, then the county ends up with that taxable income. So it just made me question, does that apply to other businesses? Like, is there a perk with either or? But I can wait for the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to stick with this graph for a minute just to make two related points. The first is that you'll notice on this graph that the highest wage sectors in the unincorporated county, which is what we're looking at on this graph, have seen lower growth. So as Judy mentioned, the Y-axis is job growth over the last 10 years. The X-axis is earning. And you can see that, for the most part, the highest wage sectors, so government, professional services, manufacturing, wholesale trade, have seen lower growth than some of the lower-wage sectors like accommodation, food services, retail trade. Two exceptions to that are healthcare and construction. But it's worth noting both that neither of those are considered tradable sectors and also that they're both bifurcated sectors. And what I mean by that is they offer some very high-wage jobs and some very low-wage jobs. And so the average earnings doesn't tell the whole story of working in those industries. And then the flip side of that is that several of the largest industries in the unincorporated county have lower average annual earnings. And so again, we come back to this point of thinking about which industries are we attracting to the county? What are the jobs being offered by those industries? And what, how does that factor into things like incentive policy, which we'll get to later? All right. Turning briefly to inclusive growth and thinking about demographics and socioeconomic status in the region, for the most part, Sacramento County and the unincorporated areas match the state overall, though they do have less racial diversity than the state, and there are some inequalities in household income. So the county and the unincorporated areas have smaller Latino populations than the state overall and a slightly higher percentage of white residents. And then we also see on the other side of the screen median household income. And overall median household income in the county and the unincorporated areas is about $84,000 a year, which is slightly below the statewide median of $92,000 a year, and does differ significantly by race within the county and the unincorporated areas. So Black and African-American households have significantly lower median household incomes than white residents. All right. I referenced this map earlier. This is looking at resident workers. So here we're looking at folks who live within the unincorporated county but work outside or live outside the unincorporated county but commute in for work. Whoops. There we go. And what you'll see is that relatively few people both live and work in the unincorporated area. So there are larger populations of people who live outside and commute in or live inside and commute out, and relatively fewer who stay in the area. Another stat that isn't shown on the slide, but that sort of reflects something similar here, is that while the unincorporated areas of Sacramento County have about 43% of the population of the county, they have just 35% of the jobs. So there is some discrepancy between the population and the job centers within the And last but not least, real estate market. So our analysis looked at the real estate markets for office, retail, and industrial space. And what we found is that while overall, the office market is relatively stable and industrial properties are in demand, the retail market faces higher vacancy rates. So this slide is focused on retail, but I'll quickly talk through office and industrial space. While office space downtown has experienced challenges since the pandemic, overall, the office market in the county is relatively stable compared to other places in the broader region. So for comparison, the Bay Area has an office vacancy rate of well over 30%, which is significantly higher than Sacramento County. There is strong demand for industrial space. Rents are rising, and there have been several large deliveries in recent years. Most of the industrial space in the county is in warehousing and distribution, which matches the industry strengths within the county. And then focusing on retail, which is the main thing highlighted on this slide, there are widely varying vacancy rates depending on the type of retail that you're looking at. So larger retail spaces, regional malls, and then what's called supercenters have very high vacancy rates. You can see the 36% for regional malls. These are big-box stores that have taken a hit across the country, particularly as shopping patterns have changed and following the pandemic. Standalone retail actually has a relatively low vacancy rate. You can see it's 4% in the unincorporated county. That said, retail vacancy is so visible that it tends to be, people in the community tend to be very aware of it. So that's something we heard a lot in our engagement, that folks are very aware of retail vacancies, particularly in commercial corridors. And we'll come back to that when we talk about the strategies and recommendations that we've developed. So as I mentioned, this got sort of synthesized and combined with the community engagement work that Judy mentioned earlier into a SWOT analysis. So you'll see the strengths and weaknesses on this slide, opportunities and threats are on the next slide. And I just want to quickly run through these, many of them we've just mentioned. But for strengths, Sacramento County and the unincorporated areas have a strong public sector, and that activity really provides an economic baseline for the region that is incredibly valuable. We just spoke about the office market staying relatively stable following the pandemic, and standalone retail is doing relatively well. And the county is considered affordable compared to surrounding counties. We mentioned the Bay Area earlier, and that helps attract businesses and residents. We mentioned population growth, which is outpacing the state, and the county is well-positioned to attract those residents from the surrounding areas. In terms of weaknesses, we mentioned tradable sector activity being limited, and a lot of the emerging industries are still very much in their infancy. So we, you know, closely reviewed a lot of the work that Valley Vision and We Prosper Together are doing for Jobs First. And there are some really exciting industries that are emerging in the region, but they're very early stage. We just spoke about visible retail vacancy in commercial corridors, particularly for these larger anchor spaces and big-box stores. Small business and workforce development programs and offerings exist within the county but are not necessarily well-known in the business community. And we'll come back to that point a lot in the strategies and recommendations section. And then, you know, part of the point of this work is to develop a unified vision for economic development in the county and really align on priorities. For opportunities, we've mentioned the agricultural dominance in the broader region and the opportunities that that presents around ag tech, biotech, food manufacturing, and really thinking about what some of those nascent industries in this county might be. Revitalizing commercial corridors, some more supports a vibrant small-business ecosystem, as well as being one of the most visible things that residents see when they're going about their day-to-day lives. The Office of Economic Development is in a very strong position to lead partnerships to drive business attraction, and this includes both within the county and, within county government and outside county government with external partners. And then centralizing information and support systems, services, excuse me, for permitting, licensing, and planning can streamline the development process. We haven't focused on that as much in this snippet that you saw here, but in the full existing conditions report, we talk a little bit more about that. For threats, we've talked about the fact that the economy in the county is not very well-diversified, which could potentially be a threat if government or healthcare sectors were to contract. And we heard a lot about negative perceptions of physical safety and crime in the county when we were doing our engagement work.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, of course.
So when you say that we're not well-diversified, I think we all understand that we're, it's, you know, historically been government-centric. It continues to be that way. You already had a slide that points that out. But what I haven't seen yet, and again, apologies if I'm beating you to the punch here, but do we know any trend information in terms of diversification increasing? And perhaps government not necessarily shrinking, but as a proportion of segment, do we see that diversification actually materializing as other non-government, you know, presence is growing in the, in the six-county region?
Yeah, it's a good question. My sense, and I would have to go back and look at the full presentation, is that for the 10-year period we looked at, the share of the jobs in the county that were made up of that government sector was pretty consistent. But we could certainly look at a longer timeline than that, because 10 years is relatively short in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, I don't disagree. The reason I ask the question is that in the last 10 years, we've actually had the introduction of new resources, new partner organizations that, you know, whose mission in life is to really address the lack of diversification. So that's why I'm really curious to see, are we beginning to see in the metrics whether or not that's coming to fruition?
Just want to go back. Yeah, we can definitely look. And I will say, I mean, you can see here that the government growth rate is relatively low compared to some of these other sectors. And this is the top 10 largest sectors by employment, and I suspect that if you looked at the full list, you would see more of that.
Yeah, but I guess what I would like to see is that chart, that chart covers two, one year?
That was 2012 to 2022.
Oh, I thought, I guess I was dyslexic there. Okay, I thought, I saw 21 to 22. So, all right. So this is, this does give us some, some trend information.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And then the, the last point that I really want to highlight here is the very bottom bullet under threats, which is that there is a wide range under threats, which is that there is a wide range of geographies and jurisdictions across the county, as you all well know, and that makes it really challenging to design sort of universally beneficial policies. And so one of the things that we are hoping to focus on is how we can think about the sort of geographic differences within the strategies and what the tailored approaches might need to be for different geographies within the county. All right. Judy, do you want to come back up?
So I think we're going to pause here, and we have actually received some questions from you already, but did just want to kind of ask whether the existing conditions findings, if that resonates with you particularly around the SWOT, are these the things that you've been seeing in your district?
Great question, and I hope my colleagues might chime in here. The one thing that I had in the back of my mind as you were presenting that I'm trying to reconcile because I know there's -- I'm sure there's a difference between kind of the anecdotal experience of any given supervisor up here and what we see day-to-day because we're so close to things and what this analysis tells us. And I'll use as an example, there is one theme that I already see running through this analysis of existing conditions as it relates to communication and how well, for instance, small-business resources are known in the community or by small business in particular. And what I see, and I think what we see, is a lot of activity, energy, intent on behalf of a number of organizations, not the least of which is our own economic development department and staff, trying to get the word out, so to speak. And so that part is a little surprising just in terms of kind of my own experience and what you're telling us here. And so I'm really curious to know, kind of, do we do a deep dive on that? Do we understand specifically, are there means of communication that we're missing or that we need to strengthen in order to get the message out? Is it the fact that we have narrow conduit to get messages out, or is it the message is completely wrong? So there's always, you know, different ways to look at it, but I'd say for me, the thing that stands out so far in your slide deck is that particular element of it.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Yes, Supervisor Kenny.
Thank you, Chair. I realize this is all unincorporated area, but it's sometimes important for us to gather the baseline of where we are vis-à-vis other jurisdictions. Says there are negative perceptions of physical safety and crime in the county. Is that unique to the county or -- maybe you can't answer that, but -- or is that county-wide?
I would say that it was connected to the vacancies in the retail and specific commercial corridors.
Okay.
And so, you know, I worked at the city, and there were definitely some, you know, I was working with the city on, you know, another corridor, and there were some similar perceptions, so I can't say it's unique.
I want that information for free, so go ahead, keep going.
Yeah, I can't say -- I don't have specific details there, but I don't, you know, we did hear about similar challenges as well, but I think it had a lot to do with the corridors and how people are perceiving the corridors. And one thing is, we keep saying it's perception because it seemed more like perception as opposed to actual issues with safety and crime.
Got it. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
And very briefly, and I'll have some more comments later, but under an opportunity, something I was going to mention later, but I think it's important to mention now, is I think a huge opportunity in the economic development context is all the work the county is doing in its community development review process. And they should be cross-referencing each other because they're very, very complementary. So I think that should be called out specifically as an opportunity, that the county is not only investing in the economic development, but in a related way, investing heavily in what we can do to streamline, of course, housing development, but also attract business development and growth in these, in the unincorporated areas.
And definitely our strategies, which we'll get to, like, do talk about OED partnering with other county departments, but it is very important that you're working together on these different elements.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo exactly what Supervisor Desmond just said because I think that's the differentiator, you know, in the threats section, I believe it was, where it's talking about other regions that have incentives and talent. What are we doing differently? And then I think that's where the rubber really meets the road in the next section of the presentation where we get into the actual strategic plan aspect and the strategies that we're going to employ. But you know, it is, and you know, I rail this point from this position often, that process improvements and trying to figure out how to get out of the way is as important to me as a lot of -- we can, you know, set a great table, but we can't force someone to order steak. And so what are we doing that is really making our environment more attractive to them than somewhere else, recognizing that the primary goal oftentimes is simply keeping them this side of the Sierra Nevadas?
Appreciate that, and we've definitely understood from many different businesses that certainty is one of the things that really helps -- certainty helps them to locate, to make business decisions all across the board. And so the more this economic development strategy helps these businesses get to certainty, the better. Yeah.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
Excellent. So we want to share our strategic plan framework. You know, so with our understanding of the SWOT and input from the engagement process, we have put together this initial strategic framework. The strategic framework defines OED's role and core strategies to advance a new vision for economic development, specifically for the Office of Economic Development. We define a vision for OED in the next five to 10 years. We specify the role that OED should be playing in implementing that vision. We lay out an initial set of seven strategies and lay out recommended actions for OED and partners. And so we have a set of slides that will present these strategies out. Here again, we want to take the time to really hear from you whether the strategies resonate, if there is anything else that's actually needed. And I'll share the strategies as-is. You know, again, this is still in process, so there are definitely some items that we are currently working on that I will mention as well.
Before you proceed.
Sure.
Just again, to have clarity, and a few of us have already kind of touched on it, but so in terms of getting to the vision for Sacramento County, we're still working in the framework of just the unincorporated area?
There is a focus on the unincorporated area. I do think that there are some elements that cross over, but the focus is unincorporated.
No, I appreciate the clarification. Where I'm going with it is, and I think some of my colleagues have already kind of referenced this in some of their previous comments here, is that it's somewhat difficult to kind of understand what the vision ought to be if we don't have any kind of reference point relative to the others, you know, the cities within the county and what they're doing. We don't work in a vacuum, so there are, at least in my elementary understanding of kind of local economics here, there has to be, I believe, some, you know, great consideration of opportunities and risks even, for instance, cannibalizing certain, you know, industries if we don't understand what Ranch Cordova's vision is or the City of Sacramento or Citrus Heights. So how do we -- how should we reconcile that?
I would say that we were considering where they have put emphasis, at least in terms of incentives from these different cities. So that actually has been pulled into our analysis. I don't think we did lay out the visions of each of the cities next to each other, which is, you know, something that is very interesting that we could potentially think about adding to our final report. So that is something that we can think about as well.
Yeah, I think it's worth seriously considering because I just think, especially with, I think, a collective interest in diversification of the economy, not just in the unincorporated county, but in all of Sacramento County, including its cities, that we need to understand, for instance, is there a critical mass gravity to certain industries if both, again, by way of example, if both Elk Grove and portions of the south part of unincorporated Sacramento County are pursuing, you know, attracting the same, you know, kind of industry players versus maybe just one or the other. And that's kind of, to me, seems like a pretty important thing to reference and to understand versus kind of what we're doing in a vacuum just in the unincorporated county.
And one of the things I would say is, you know, that's definitely true. There are also different -- we mentioned in the SWOT that there's many different communities within, like, within Sacramento County. And so I would say that some of the cities might be competitive with some parts of Sacramento County and not competitive with others. So we just also want to take that into context as well.
Okay.
So we laid out the initial vision that I'd like to read. Sacramento County, and this is for the Office of Economic Development, and the vision lays out that Sacramento County will strategically build a resilient, sustainable, diversified economy by creating and maintaining a business environment that boys' industries, interest, and ability to operate in unincorporated Sacramento County, delivering high-quality jobs for Sacramento residents, and generating strong revenue streams for the economy and county. And then secondly, empowers entrepreneurs and local businesses to actualize their aspirations in starting and growing small and medium-sized businesses in unincorporated Sacramento County. And then also fosters thriving communities with a vibrant sense of place and a robust business ecosystem, particularly by addressing retail corridors comprehensively at the county level. So this is the initial vision that we've laid out, and our strategies are avenues to implement this vision. And so this is really the guiding vision as we're looking at those strategies.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. This may go beyond your scope of work or the area that you normally weigh in, but like Supervisor Kennedy, I'm looking to get information for free. So on the last point there, that foster thriving communities, talking about the aging retail corridors, do you have or know of any particular success stories? Or I think incentives don't get you there, and it's much more complicated, obviously, to tear down and rebuild an area that's been developed previously than to go to a greenfield, for example.
Absolutely.
So do you know of other places that have been successful and what they've done in order to encourage that?
That's a complicated question because I work in a lot of corridors, so it's actually like, oh, I'm thinking about many different ones. There are different ways to make this happen, and we talk about, and we'll get there in our strategy, of OED partnering with community development to support some of those retail corridor analyses. It definitely tends to be a little bit of a mix of carrots to help support that development. We've seen that opening up some of those developments to residential can actually help to catalyze new development in some of those locations where, you know, again, retail is changing with the coming of the internet and retail footprints might be smaller. Sometimes smaller footprints with the residents to support it can actually still provide the per-square-foot numbers that actually may be similar to what you had before, if you have enough people coming and spending the money there. And so a lot of times, we've seen revitalization strategies where residential's getting added to different retail corridors that can help to kind of benefit it all, and maybe the retail footprint gets a little bit smaller, but it doesn't mean that the revenue coming from it isn't similar. That can be an avenue. But these are strategies that need to be thought through with community development, and there is a role for OED to play to collaborate within that. But I think it really takes both of those different departments working together.
And if I may add to that, Dave DeFonte, Deputy County Executive. I do agree housing is going to be a huge component of this. We've been over-retailed, you know, we've known we've been over-retailed, at least by way of zoning, for decades now, and that's not unique to Sacramento County. You know, we've been trying to unlock these corridors for many years. I think that's going to take a few things. One, your board had a workshop last year on a suite of zoning code amendments that we're working on. So I think to your point, it's not necessarily just about incentives, right? And those do have somewhat of a limited value. It's about getting out of our own way in a lot of ways and reducing the amount of process it will take to, you know, get redevelopment in these areas. And right now, I know I've heard from at least, well, I've heard from many of you, but particularly Supervisor Desmond, about our SPAs, right, which can be a mechanism that was well-intentioned but does sometimes get in our own way of what we want to actually be, you know, encouraging to happen in these corridors. We're on the cusp of hiring our infill coordinator, and I think one of the things I want them to be looking at right off the bat is viewing these corridors through the eyes of a developer. It has to be profitable to build in these areas or it's not going to happen. So not looking at it just from sort of that traditional planning perspective and sort of what we want to be 20 years from now, but looking at it from a developer's perspective and what would it take for me to invest a dollar here, right? So that's going to be a huge effort moving forward. And I also think it's going to take some level of priority. Our general plan identifies 14 commercial corridors, who I'm sure there's others that we could add to that list. You know, one of my most recent favorite quotes from our budget officer is, "We can do anything, we can't do all the things," right? So where do we want to really invest in those corridors? What has the highest potential return on investment? So I think it's going to be a combination of getting out of our own way, but also looking where we might want to strategically invest by way of infrastructure, et cetera, to reduce barriers to corridor development. And we're going to be looking at best practices. If we can steal ideas from others, you know, that's certainly something we're going to be doing.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Judy, you mentioned community development, the empowers entrepreneurs and local businesses. Is this in partnership with local Chamber of Commerce's P-bids, the SBA to support them? Because you can help somebody get, you know, you can help somebody open up a business, but it's sustaining it then after that oftentimes people, you know, begin to have challenges and then that oftentimes lead to, you know.
Absolutely. And I'll describe some of these in the strategies. There's work that OED does, but they also are referring to all of those different groups that you mentioned as well.
There's a section in the unincorporated part in D4 that had a Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce has, it dissolved probably because there wasn't enough support there. But there are businesses in the area that would benefit from a Chamber of Commerce because the Chamber of Commerce, in my opinion, is one of the most important parts of a community in supporting small businesses. So to me, it was how do I help them, you know, how do I help them establish that chamber so that they can be supported? But that's just off-comment. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm just going to make some comments now and some observations because I'm going to have to cut out, so please indulge me. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me this opportunity. But Judy, thank you, and I've gone through the PowerPoint. I've had a lot of discussions with Crystal, including discussions with your team about this. As the, anytime I mention the characteristics of my district, I can feel Supervisor Kennedy rolling his eyes at me, talking about unincorporated area. But I feel like more of a city council member most of the time because 90% of my district is unincorporated. So whether it's our community development review process or more efforts with economic development, it's great and I welcome it, and I appreciate so much all the work that you have done and the partners that you really went over that you met with. I mean, you really, I think you covered everybody, including all these chambers, all these P-bids, and I know some of the partners are out here, nonprofit leaders, arts organizations, I mean, you name it. So I really appreciate that. I think you hit all the right people. And kind of thinking about, I've thought about this a lot, about what is about, I've thought about this a lot, about what is the Sacramento County Office of Economic Development and this effort we're undertaking, even though it's more focused and prioritized really on the unincorporated area vis-à-vis cities with their offices of economic development. Supervisor Cern is 100% right. We are not operating in a vacuum. And Crystal, you and I have talked about this a lot, where we partner with the offices of economic development in the cities, as well as a metro chamber, as well as GSEC, and obviously, all the other, not only geographic chambers, but all the ethnic chambers that are huge leaders. And I'm very confident that we're striking the right balance here. And for me, also, kind of personally, is you're all aware that of efforts to incorporate certain areas in Sacramento County over the last several years, after Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove and Citrus Heights were incorporated. And these efforts failed, but a lot of people are still, they hate Sacramento County. And I hear about it all the time from those who, they want nothing to do with Sacramento County. And I'm at community meetings saying, look, I get you hate Sacramento County, but for now, I'm what you got, right? So let's work together. Let's work together with the county. And to that effort, Crystal, you and Todd Smith came out to a series of community meetings I hosted in my district to talk about what our efforts are, what our plans are in these unincorporated communities. I know our Office of Economic Development has always done a great job, and I'm looking at Troy Givens up there, but we're investing a lot more in this and really trying to change the perception of folks who live in the unincorporated area. That, look, the county is treating these areas more like a city. We are acting more like the municipal services provider and engaging, I think in a way we haven't in these unincorporated communities. So I'm looking at Crystal and Dave both. Thank you and your teams for everything that you're doing. I am going to leave now, but just please, I want to be part of this effort because I know whatever action we take here today, and I'm sure this will move forward with some board input, obviously, this is only the first step. You're going to come back with some specific, you know, measures, whether that's incentives or other ways to set the table. Am I correct in assuming that? Okay. You'll come back to us with, how do we really operationalize this strategic plan? So I look forward to that discussion as well. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak, and I will talk to you later.
All right. Go get them at CSAC. Thank you. All right. I think that concludes questions for now.
So defining a clear role for OED allows the office to focus on its core capacities and maximize impact for business and residents. So OED, in terms of our framework, will lead efforts to strengthen the business environment, both directly and indirectly, through two core functions, and will work with partners to support other important efforts. So we have the two core functions being connect and coordinate. And under connect and coordinate, OED will serve as the lead organization to connect businesses and industries to the resources they need to be successful in unincorporated Sacramento County. And then, secondly, we have communicate and celebrate. OED will elevate Sacramento County as a good place to do business and broadcast resources and opportunities throughout the unincorporated county. And then you'll notice here, at least the first set of strategies are really categorized under OED-led and partner-led. And so here, you know, we're kind of pushing the idea that OED will focus on the two areas that meets their core capacities, but will partner with others to support, to support other needs within the county. And going into more detail, we'll kind of start with connect and coordinate and kind of describe these strategies. So here, you know, we have OED as the lead organization to connect businesses and industries to the resources they need. And the first strategy is to provide technical assistance, capacity-building support, and referrals for small businesses in Sacramento County. And we really did want to name that OED currently operates several programs that support entrepreneurs and small businesses. The Small Business Liaison Program provides businesses with technical assistance to navigate county permitting processes, access available resources, and with other aspects of planning, and helps with other aspects of planning, establishing and growing a business such as site selection. And then we have the Business Environmental Resource Center, which helps entrepreneurs and small businesses with environmental, regulatory permitting and compliance. And between these two programs, OED, and throughout OED, it's supporting more than 500-plus entrepreneurs, businesses, and developers a year. So OED is really doing a lot of work. And to build on this work, we want OED to be able to expand capacity and the reach of its current programs. So our recommendations there, our recommended actions that are listed, are to continue the direct programming for entrepreneurs and small business owners through the Small Business Liaison and BERC program, and continue referring businesses and residents to other local partners. And that's, you know, as you mentioned, Supervisor Rodriguez, partners like P-Bids, Chambers, and the Sacramento Valley Small Business Development Center and the Chambers of Commerce. The second recommendation is to expand the capacity of that direct programming by adding an additional staff member. And then, you know, we've consistently heard that the BERC and the Small Business Liaison are incredibly valuable, but not well-known. And I know Supervisor Cern, it sounds like you've heard different things, but we did hear that in a lot of our meetings as people understood the depth of what was available. I think that they may have heard about the programs, but they didn't understand the depth of the resources. And so, you know, that's definitely an area that we want to ensure that OED's reach is strengthened through partnerships and marketing for direct assistance, and that comes up in another strategy later. And I do want to note that all of these, all of our strategies and all of the elements can be customized as needed for the differing geographies in Sacramento County. So all of these do relate, like all of the different strategies can be created bespoke by OED to the needs of that actual geography. So South County might need something a little different than North County.
Can I interrupt here? The recommendations, as you present them here, is that a function of kind of an honest assessment of some of these missions or actions that, for instance, that GSEC does that we, or doesn't do, that we would fill a void to do? Or are some of these complementary? Both GSEC and the county would strengthen that activity?
I would say they're complementary. So like, actually, GSEC came up in the next section that I was going to talk about, which is connecting businesses and industry leaders to assistance, including incentives, to support location or expansion in Sacramento County. And, you know, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council is really the main group that is attracting businesses to the overall greater region of Sacramento. And we think it's complementary, and that Sacramento County does need to play a role in specifically ensuring that you're bringing more of those folks to unincorporated Sacramento County. But we think it's working in collaboration with them. So I think it's supplementary. We're laying and relying on, we're relying on their work and working with them to bring folks to the unincorporated county.
In other words, you're telling me that this is, none of this is duplicative. It's because we, quite frankly, we pay a lot to be a member of GSEC, and, you know, it's not our money, it's your money, it's taxpayer dollars. So we want to make sure that that investment in our participation with GSEC is productive, certainly. But the last thing I think any of us want to do is reinvent the wheel.
I definitely agree. And I think that this is, you know, work that is coming, that is supplementing what GSEC is doing. They are, like, I think that OED is going to need the information that's coming out of GSEC. They're working with GSEC, and it's an avenue. But actually, you'll also see that we have strategies around partnerships and expectations around those partnerships, and how we might want to see outcomes and specific outcomes coming out of different partnerships as well.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Judy, this is going to elaborate on the question I had earlier. And that is, and I'll use the example with GSEC. When GSEC goes out, they look for these businesses that are looking to relocate to the Sacramento region. And so, and I track a lot of these businesses because I'm always curious, the jobs that they bring, and how, and the impact that it has to a community. But what I'm seeing is oftentimes, these bigger businesses are coming into cities. And so what can the, what is it that the county is deficient in that is not attracting them to the county? Or is it just that, you know, that, is there an incentive that cities give them that maybe we need to reevaluate to attract them to the county?
So that is exactly what this strategy is talking about. So it is necessary to think about the incentives that Sacramento County is offering. You know, I also do have, I'm trying not to be too, like, to bring in personal thoughts of, like, you do have to be careful with incentives. You don't want it to be a run to the, like, bottom of giving everything away.
Right.
But that said, you know, there are other cities that have incentives that, you know, that are available within the region. And Sacramento County does need to clarify and create a comprehensive package of their incentives. So, you know, OED coordinates incentives for business attraction right now in collaboration with GSEC and the county executive. So, but that's often done on a case-by-case basis. And that can include expedited permitting, single-point-of-contact project coordination, talent workforce training, fee deferrals, and other financial incentives. So the county is doing the work, but given that it's on a case-by-case basis, and I mentioned earlier that businesses are looking for certainty, a business who's coming in doesn't know what they're going to get. And that, you know, like, by creating a package, and what we're suggesting is to define and advertise a comprehensive package of incentives, including OED's existing case management and the workforce hiring assistance and its site search assistance, but developing a scoring rubric and tying incentives to prioritized public investments and county priorities.
And that would require for us to know what other cities that are attracting businesses have. Is that correct?
Yeah. And we do have that information. OED has been pulling that information on a pretty regular basis. So they have that information, but it's that the county needs to create their comprehensive package. And what we're suggesting is to kind of build out kind of a scoring rubric for when someone's coming, the incentives that you want to provide. You do want to ensure that you're providing incentives to get quality living wage jobs. One thing, you know, we're noting that you want to have positive fiscal return on that investment that you're making. And then also that it's going to align with industry targets, so like the tradable sectors and the emerging industries that we're thinking about. We, in our report, actually had a case study about Dallas, where they actually built this scoring rubric and really assigned points based off of these, you know, elements. And what that does is, like, by sharing that out, you know, developers will be able to score themselves and figure out how much incentives they're going to get, and they're going to understand that upfront. And that can be very helpful. You know, that plus streamlining permitting is going to be extremely helpful to get more folks attracted to Sacramento County specifically. And, you know, one thing, too, is like, incentives are great, but I also think businesses are locating, are looking to locate where they want to locate. And, you know, those are just within the margins, but within the margins counts.
Yeah. No, I believe that there's definitely a benefit to having even like a concierge for a big business, for a very large fish that you're trying to attract, to have some kind of a concierge service where you can make it easier for someone to do business with the county. Thank you.
Okay. So, you know, I kind of just described 1.2, which is connect businesses and industry leaders to assistance, including incentives to support location or expansion in Sacramento County. And we talked about developing and advertising a proactive and comprehensive approach to incentives, developing clear performance metrics, and tying incentives to the county vision and priorities. So these are these recommended actions to actually build that out. And then finally, and I do want to share a little bit more about this last one, but align incentives to regional priority industries, such as those identified by We Prosper Together and the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. And so this third recommendation is really where we get that focus on how do we support tradable sectors and attract those. Sacramento County has a strong government, government sector, you know, government sector and a lot of jobs there. And we think that transforms well to the We Prosper Together's business services focus. And that can be a priority industry for that alignment with these incentives. Also, Ally talked about how the county, the unincorporated county is poised to capture ag tech and food manufacturing and those value-added, you know, agricultural services. And so that can be an opportunity, and that aligns with some of the research and development and working lands pieces in the We Prosper Together. And really also highlighting that the educated talent base that's here really creates opportunities in mobility, life sciences, and other research and tech. So there are these opportunities that are coming up regionally and that Sacramento County, specifically unincorporated, can do a great job of pulling in. So I want to move on to the partner-led strategies. So these are strategies that OED would be collaborating and working with folks, but are looking to another, either another county department or another partner to lead. And here, you know, the first one is around simplifying regulations and processes. I think this has come up already, but, you know, there, residents and businesses do perceive Sacramento County as a complex regulatory environment. Some folks are confused about incorporated versus unincorporated, and overlapping regulations cause confusion. And then accessing building permits, zoning changes, health inspections, and other required regulatory permissions can be challenging. And often, that's challenging everywhere, but it can be challenging, and making sure that it's as simple as possible for folks, again, can help to limit that uncertainty and can help to support businesses to grow and get attracted to unincorporated county areas. And so our recommended actions are that OED regularly convenes partner agencies and departments within the county, and OED can be working with community development to work, community development and others, to simplify regulations and processes to start and run a business. And then in terms of navigating the county's regulatory environment, that OED should continue to support individual businesses and residents in navigating those processes through the BERC and Small Business Liaison Program. And then also that OED could think about adapting existing informational guides on navigating common processes. Looking at 1.4, here, there's a focus to convene partners and coordinate efforts to support initiatives that directly advance the county's vision. So through the SWAT, we heard about a lot of opportunities and a lot of challenges and a lot of needs. The economic development encompasses many areas of focus that really extend beyond OED's core capacities. And so those are some of the aspects that we want to think about working with partners to support. And some of that that comes up is through, we've talked about this, but thriving retail corridors and the work that's being done already through the Community Development Department, and how OED can be a vital partner there to support getting businesses and property owners to participate in some of these opportunities. But it's really not the lead and working with those organizations. And being supportive of that collaboration can be helpful. In addition, you know, so there's retail corridors. Workforce partnerships came up a lot, and workforce partnerships are currently being led by SETA. And while OED can convene business and labor and education, SETA is still likely to be the lead in terms of workforce development. And so how can OED support, like, we want the strategy for OED to be supporting SETA through the development of additional workforce development projects and refining the products that they offer.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
And so you mentioned the thriving retail corridors. And so are you thinking that there's a potential that there may be other use that would, until you mentioned SETA and some other organizations, that would change the way that these retail corridors are currently functioning?
I apologize. That was probably, those are two separate items. So we have the retail core So we have the retail corridors, which is one initiative that we've noted through the SWAT that is extremely important in terms of economic development in the county. And there we think it's community development that should be the lead there, and OED should be supporting it.
Got it.
And a separate strategy is workforce development.
So let me hone in on the retail corridors. So we know that how people shop today is changing. And so when we look at these retail corridors, it may be that they're no longer probably viable as retail, you know, areas that bring in retail, just because of how sort of things are changing when it comes to shopping. People are more prone to shop online, so you have businesses, like, you know, small businesses that are struggling, the retail, the retail shop. So is there a potential thought that they could be utilized for something other than retail?
That, you know...
Although, don't get me wrong, I love the tax-based businesses, but is there, I mean, is there a thought that maybe there's a different use for these corridors?
I, you know, like, there are different opportunities to think about alternative uses for the retail corridors, and I think that is a study that community development, it sounds like the infill coordinator who's coming that Dave mentioned, will be thinking about that, particularly residential specifically. But definitely agreed that there are different alternatives that folks can look at for these centers that exist that may be vacant. And it may be a specific shopping center adding retail as opposed to it completely being demolished, though. So it's not saying that we're completely raising all of the retail, but there may be alternatives for some of the retail.
Mm-hmm.
And if I may add to that, I mean, I think housing is going to be a big component because more housing then supports the existing retail, right? You have more people that might be taking advantage of those retail opportunities just given their, the proximity of new housing to existing and hopefully new retail as well. But we're also seeing a lot of reuse of, you know, medium box stores for, I guess, for lack of a better term, service-related industries. So you're seeing, you know, trampoline houses, right? I mean, you're seeing them transition to more experiential types of businesses as opposed to your traditional, you know, retail shopping. So we're seeing a lot of transition right now, and I think it is going to be a deeper dive into what makes the most sense into those corridors, and that'll be a collaboration between economic development, community development, and many others to see what makes the most sense.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So in terms of this strategy, you know, again, the idea is that there are these partnerships that OED can help to support to address some of these major economic development items. We've talked about retail corridors, we've talked about workforce partnerships. Another thing that comes up is infrastructure, and we talked about rural transportation and broadband. And that's another area that OED can be playing a role to help support and advance the needs for the transportation, for improved transportation, infrastructure, and broadband infrastructure. This is not exactly OED's role, you know, there'd be public works, transportation, you know, but OED can be a partner and should be potentially advocating and looking to support collaboration to help implement and help think about how we address some of those current challenges. So one of the final kind of recommendations in this partnership section was really ensuring that the partnerships that OED has are working well. And so we suggested having partnership agreements that lay out common goals, set clear targets and metrics, and outline annual reporting expectations. And that would only be for partnerships over a certain amount, you know, you can set that amount, it could be 300,000 or 500,000, but at a high amount, just to ensure that these partnerships, you know, are focused on the outcomes and are working with Sacramento County to meet those outcomes. So the final report will be providing more implementation guidance on each of these strategies, including the partnership agreements and other elements around the scoring rubric that we talked about on the last slide. So the second core function was communicate and celebrate. And here, we're suggesting that OED will position Sacramento County as a good place to do business and broadcast resources and opportunities throughout the county. And much of this work is already being done, you know, and I think you're all familiar that Sacramento County has a strong base of talent across multiple sectors, the quality of life is high, and there are lots of sites available, you know, from major retail quarters that we've been discussing, you know, to industrial parks. And OED provides valuable services to attract and develop businesses, and that OED should be focusing on broadcasting the county's resources and opportunities more so than it currently is doing. So we, you know, the goal there is to increase awareness and utilization of small business resources as one piece. And so that's working with the Business Environmental Resource Center partners to strengthen communication channels, and that's providing program design and outreach support to other agencies, designing small business programming, and increasing collaboration between BERC funding partners, including special events, so that folks really know about the work that they're doing and that's available. But we also suggest hosting regular community meetings, these being led by OED, in line with OED partners such as P-Bids, Chambers, and other organizations. And this can really be that opportunity to get into the depth of the services that OED offers. It also gives OED a chance to be connecting with the community on a pretty regular basis and getting input from the community on challenges and opportunities that are coming up as well. So the second strategy here is to produce materials that highlight opportunities to do business in Sacramento County. And, you know, currently there is a website, and the OED website highlights the county's business attraction services as well as key statistics on the county. However, the website doesn't really, doesn't completely convey the breadth and depth of resources available. And so our recommendations are to create a strong centralized website for business attraction that articulates the county's vision and strengths and makes the case for locating in unincorporated Sacramento County. This would integrate a lot of the other things that we said, the incentives and all of these different pieces that we've been talking about. So all of that would get added to this new website. And then also producing a toolkit of materials that would highlight Sacramento County's alignment with regional industry priorities. And so again, talking about those tradable sectors that we're looking to kind of move in and bring that together. And in our final report, we had some examples of some case studies from different communities across the U.S. that are really highlighting this and kind of sharing this in a way that's very compelling. And then finally, publicly share OED's work and its impacts. And so OED has a strong reputation with other county agencies and is viewed as collaborative and effective, and it's currently working across several mediums to showcase its work. So it publishes a section in the county's overall annual report, and it published a short video in 2024. But historically, most of the reporting has been focused on operations, not economic development outcomes. So to better highlight OED's work and impacts, we want to produce an annual, or recommendations are to produce an annual independent report focused on OED's activities and successes. And this report would include key metrics demonstrating progress on these strategies as outlined. And it would also highlight businesses and organizations that exist in the county. So really, this could be, you know, used and leveraged by partners to amplify OED's message. And then here, in some of the ongoing work that we're doing in terms of the final report, we want to think about how we're leveraging and working with partners to amplify this message, including things like how are we helping to support agro tourism and other specific pieces? So we are looking to put that into the final report as well. So these three slides have gone over kind of those key seven strategies. As mentioned, there are a few more things that we're lifting up, but at this time, I wanted to pause and make sure to get your feedback to kind of understand the different elements that we've presented and what you're thinking about them. And again, we've gotten some already, but I want to go back to the, oop, to the vision first and ask whether the vision statement resonates. And then we can talk about the strategies and whether those align with what you are thinking of the need for economic development in Sacramento County.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm going to play a little bit of role of turd in the punchbowl here in that this is all great work. And, you know, Crystal and I have had the conversation of, the fact of the matter is, OED is going to be most successful, first of all, implementing all of these things, but if it has tools in the toolbox. And, you know, there's so, often we get calls from people who want to move into our districts or they want to open a business in the district, they want to develop housing even in our districts, which is economic development. And, you know, our hands are tied because they need help, particularly in the more depressed areas, economically depressed areas where infrastructure is a huge issue. And, you know, we've tried to identify creative ways for years at, for example, Stockton Boulevard, to get development and to get some, and it just hasn't been able to happen. I mean, for 10 years, I'd been telling people, well, there's BERC, and that's great, but it's not enough to get somebody to move into my district or move into the county. And so, you know, as I said, I don't want to denigrate and downplay all of the good work that's gone in here, but the fact of the matter is, if we don't find incentives for people, and those aren't all economic incentives, but they're important, but those are harder and harder to come by, but the work that Mr. DeFanti is doing, those are incentives. Our partnerships with organizations like SMUD, those are incentives. But none of it means that much if we don't have something to offer other than good meetings.
So one thing I will note is that a lot of the cities and the incentives they're offering, they have a pool of resources to offer those. And I think within the county, some of those are limited. But when you say you want to offer incentives, you're talking about financial resources or...
Not necessarily. That's just one tool. But we need to get all those tools in the same toolbox so that we have a menu for people to choose from and that we back up this good work and all of these really nice words with something that actually says to somebody, come do business in my district, in Supervisor Desmond or anybody else's district. You know, otherwise, we can get together and play kumbaya and, you know, talk about how supportive we are in business. But fact of the matter is, bottom line is, they want to know, well, how do I benefit? And how can I afford, not even benefit, but how can I even afford to do business in your district or in the county as a whole? And I think we really need to focus on that. And it's getting outside of the box of the county, too, working with other agencies, working cross jurisdictions, putting, I'll give you an example. Years ago, a large employer in the district that I represent, though it was before I did, you know, Hamble Soup, was looking at moving out of the county of Sacramento, across the street from the city, pretty much. And if the county had just come to them and said, well, we can give you, we can help you with permitting and all that, they would have gone decades ago. It took the city of Sacramento and, you know, Mayor Serna actually is a leader, it took SMUD, it took the county, it took all of these agencies working together. We have to do a better job of identifying every tool we've got available to us and not, you know, separate our efforts from all of these other agencies. That kind of was supposed to be what GSAC did. I'm not really convinced that it's gotten us where we want to get, frankly, particularly with the amount of money that we invest in it. But unless we look at, how can I, you know, when Joe Businessman comes to me or Jane Businesswoman comes to me and says, I want to move on Stockton Boulevard, and I say, I want you to, good luck, that's all I got.
I do want to say I completely agree with you, and that is our intention...
You can stop there.
Set it here first. 1.2, that is the intention there, to create this toolkit, a comprehensive package of incentives, and to pull all the pieces together.
If you're, I'm sorry, I agree with you, and I'm not downplaying all the good work that's gone into this. If you're reading off of me frustration, you're absolutely correct. And that's where, that's where I'm coming from.
Absolutely. It definitely is one of the most important things that needs to get done.
Maybe I can add, you know, when I hear the word incentive, you know, the first thing that pops into my mind is, you know, X dollars for Y jobs or something like that. And I think to your, maybe part of your point, we need to be thinking much more broadly than that. And, you know, we've talked about our development program managers before, and we're actually adding one right now. And those employees, their sole purpose is to offer white glove service to, you know, a certain amount of projects, to be that single point of contact and usher them through whatever that process is, whether it be solely with the county or, you know, somewhat unique to us. Might include a whole lot of external entities as well, because we don't control sewer or fire or other things, but they're integral to our process. So I think that is a key incentive that we can and should be more widely advertising, although it's not, you know, dollars in their pocket, time is money, so I guess in some ways it very much is. I think another key thing, and this goes back to the zoning ordinance amendments and some of the other things we're doing, we have to have vacant zoned land ready to roll, right? Part of this is redevelopment of commercial corridors and making it easier to transition what once was an office space or retail to housing or something else. And there, that's a lot of inherent challenges baked into that, but making it easier to do so. But also, I think in large part, why I say Metro Air Park is so successful right now is that, you know, we've put the plans in place and we're essentially ready to roll, right? We have a fairly efficient process now, for the most part, to get people in in very short order. And that's what businesses are often looking for, right? We can be desirable in a lot of ways, but if we don't have the land or the building that they want to locate in, then they're going to be looking elsewhere. So I think we do need to broaden sort of our perspective on what an incentive means, and I do like the idea of that menu of options to make sure it's readily apparent to whomever might be looking what we do offer and advertising that far and wide.
Thank you, Dave. And I think Metro Air Park was a great example to bring up. That's someplace that 10 years ago, nobody could move into it because it didn't make any sense. But we all put, rolled up our sleeves and put a lot of work into make it, and this leadership of Mr. Serna, and look at it now. I mean, it's a thriving example of success, so I appreciate the example.
If I could, I have Supervisor Rodriguez and Supervisor Hume in the queue, but just to immediately follow up on, I think, the great point that Supervisor Kennedy makes, if I understand correctly, you know, we really need to focus on the tangible. And while planning and mission statements and the refinement of this is appropriate and necessary and is certainly a very valuable roadmap, we need to think, always think practically as if you were in the shoes of the folks that are taking the financial risks to come here or expand here. And think clearly about what, how that manifests itself. Again, extending the Metro Air Park example, there was a lot of hair on that project for decades as it relates to just the tax structure out there and a lot of other things. But if you look at kind of the game changer moment, at least my experience, was the fact that it was all hands to get the interchange done. Once the interchange is done, it's a different proposition, looking at whether you locate and expand in West Sacramento versus unincorporated Sacramento County. So I just think that we need to understand that there's going to be a point in time where we understand the value of this, but then it becomes a different exercise, I think, to think about how we are actually going to put skin in the game to make those real incentives materialize, so. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Judy, thank for your presentation. There's a lot of really good information, and I would agree with everything that you have said. I'm a big fan of economic development. Everything I do, the bottom line is, how does it impact our communities? But one of the things... But one of the things that I think would be profitable for communities is to know what is missing. What is some, like, so you have, you know, and I'm going to think of my own unincorporated parts of D4. And so in those communities, what are they deficient in because, and that hopefully we can go attract and bring in? Some of the challenges are also that these small, these smaller towns want to maintain their small-town feel, so, you know, there's always that challenge. But I'm always curious is what is, what is missing in that community and how can we help facilitate bringing in that type of a business into the area, whatever it may be, you know? I think also is for me to, is to understand the land that we have and what could be utilized. We talked about, you know, Mr. DeFonte just talked about, some of the comments that he just recently made that I think make a lot of senses, but is to know maybe the inventory that we have and that, and what kind of businesses can be attracted to that. I'm a small business owner. I've been a small business owner for 10 years. And one of the things that my landlord did is that she waited almost a year and a half with a vacant building, waiting for the right business to come. And I think that's sometimes hard because people want to get people into their business, you know, into their businesses. And I'm mostly referring to small businesses. But I think it's, you know, it was waiting for the right business to come in and then help them, you know, help facilitate them. And I think initially, what really sort of saved me from, you know, just the tough times is I was very well-connected to my Chamber of Commerce. And for, you know, I'm, when I, when I see businesses open, one of the things that I'm always concerned is, how can we get that business owner support? Because here's the reality, it is tough to do business in California. And I know firsthand how it is to say, oh, my gosh, I think it's time to, like, give up. But because everybody wants a piece of the pie, and it seems like you're just always in debt or you owe somebody or, you know, and so it's even understanding, understanding that part of running a business and supporting small businesses and, you know, and ensuring that communities understand that if you want to keep your small businesses, you've got to support them. So that might do sense. Thank you.
That's great. And then we, there was a focus on ensuring that small businesses, small businesses receive technical assistance.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Excellent presentation, and I really look forward to when we start to get a little meat on the bone and we see some of the devil in the details as how this gets implemented into actionable items. But I want to kind of go back a little bit to what Supervisor Kennedy was talking about in a different way, and that is that I think there needs to be an undercurrent of all of this, of a rising tide mentality. And that the more we can collaborate and bring people to the region, to the geographical Sacramento County, not necessarily to the agency Sacramento County. And the reason why I say that is because unlike most other counties in California, Sacramento County is something of an oddity in that at some point, they decided urbanization in county areas was a good thing. Most counties don't do that. They direct development towards incorporated areas, to municipal agencies. And so for me, I look at then what does Sacramento County have that is unique, that is that sort of tipping point for the business that's looking to locate here or expand here or stay in California despite all the challenges? And that really has to come down to location and amenity and that agricultural sector that you were referencing. And so, you know, I think the more we can play up that, as far as, certainly the Delta is the most backyard example, but also the proximity to Napa, to Yosemite, to San Francisco, to Tahoe, to, you know, Redding, whatever, the airport and the expansions that's going on there, I think really, our goal, again, ought to be to keep people on this side of the Sierra Nevada, is recognizing that California is in and of itself challenging. But then, what is the value prospect? What is the play of, why come to Sacramento? And then recognizing, again, that to the extent if they locate in the city of Sacramento, in Elk Grove, in Citrus Heights, that's still good for the county. And there's still a synergy there that can be created, and we can build off of that success. So I think you heard it in several different ways from this dais, as far as not existing in a vacuum, and the more we can sort of bake that into, you know, the general policies that you've elucidated here, I think is a good thing.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Great. I think that concludes remarks for now.
And so, you know, as mentioned, we're going to be taking back your feedback and integrating it into our final report.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all of your time.
Crystal, does that conclude staff's and our consultants' presentation?
It does. Thank you all so much for your time today. We're really looking forward to getting to work on this and refining it with all of this great feedback today.
Thank you. I'm going to check with the clerk to see if we have public comments.
We do. We have three speakers.
All right.
Dean Peckham?
Hi, members of the board. How are you today?
Good morning. How are you?
My name's Dean Peckham. I work, serve as Executive Director of the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance. We were formed by the manufacturers in our region, really to address the need for manufacturer's greatest challenge these days, which is finding a qualified and well-trained workforce. So we've spent a lot of time building partnerships with our education, high school, community colleges in the region to build pathways into manufacturing, develop apprenticeship programs and training programs to serve our manufacturers in the region, representing, you know, manufacturers from throughout the seven county area. I'd really like to, first of all, congratulate you for the efforts to update your economic development strategy. I've had the opportunity to be involved in a couple of workshops and have really enjoyed the input from the community, especially, you know, from the residents who also have, you know, similar concerns to, you know, the status of the old retail commercial corridors in their communities as well. First, I'd like to just say, you know, as SBMA, we support the diversification of the economy within the county, cities, county at large in the region, beyond, you know, our traditional retail, government, healthcare, construction. The reality is, manufacturing in our region is really less than 4% of the workforce compared to other metro areas in this region, which is 8% to 12%. And, you know, to Mr. Hume's comment earlier about economic output and economic goals, manufacturing has an economic impact that far outweighs other sectors within the economy. Typically, it's anywhere from 2.5 to three times economic impact, which means the money is recirculated within the economy over and over again, and it brings new money into our community. The county does have some really great manufacturing communities in Mather, McClellan, Metro Air Park, Power Inn area. And the county should really, I encourage you to put your efforts behind supporting the development of those areas to bring new manufacturers into those regions. As many of you know, one of the big manufacturers in our region is Siemens Mobility, which is located in the Power Inn area, employing over 2,500 people. And they have a workforce that looks like Sacramento. It's diverse from all aspects of our community, and they provide a great manufacturing pathway for people who are trying to find their career. Second, I'd like to offer that, we'd like to put our efforts behind whatever the county can do to support the workforce and employment opportunities for the residents of the county, whether they be high school students or residents of many of our underserved communities. The biggest challenge facing manufacturing today is that 45% of our workforce is going to be retiring over the next 20 years. We need to bring more men, more people into the manufacturing workforce, and that's why we try to partner with those high schools and with those community-based organizations in the region.
Mr. Peckham?
Yep.
I'm being lenient with the time because we only have three speakers, but you're almost, you're going on almost twice the time.
I'm sorry. One final point.
Sure.
SBMA is hosting its High School Manufacturing Challenge this weekend. The students are challenged with making a Tic Tac showboard. We have seven prize awards for the students. We have 112 students registered from 17 high schools, three of them that I know from the county floor in Rio Americano and, I think, Bella Vista. So if you have an opportunity to come out this Saturday, Citrus Heights Event Center, I will leave the flyer with the clerk and hopefully to see you there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Excuse me. Kyla Bryant?
Sorry for over talking.
Nope.
Good afternoon. My name is Kyla Bryant with Luminary Partners, and I have had the privilege of being part of the advisory committee, which has included engaging in the focus group and facilitating a roundtable discussion at one of the community meetings. My comments today are to affirm the work and the engagement that has been done to develop this draft strategic plan that's before you. I have worked on local, regional, and statewide economic, small business and workforce development initiatives, including the current California Jobs First and We Prosper Together initiative. I see how crucial it is for the county's economic plan to align with the ongoing regional work that is being done, and I'm excited to see this process continue moving forward to action. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim Alves?
Yeah. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I'm Jim Alves with SMUD's Economic Development Program. I just wanted to share our appreciation for the partnership that we have with Sacramento County, particularly the Office of Economic Development. We've seen an increased level of engagement, I think, from an economic development perspective from that body, and we particularly have a partnership, financial partnership with Burke, which was referred to several times before, and look forward to expanding that partnership. We're committed to serving our under-resourced communities, and we're working with them through the Business Watch program to target six new unincorporated areas that aren't within a P-Bid. So it's an opportunity and a vehicle for us to be able to partner and reach new businesses, as we're always working. The great benefit of this body is Sacramento County is almost identical to our service territory, and so it's a great pairing and partnership. Two comments made previously by Supervisor Kennedy, I think resources is something that this body can take consideration to. There are a number of other cities that have resources that, as we meet with prospective businesses, that we could point to, and to have those available is helpful to us. Also, Supervisor Hume, I think to think collaboratively as an entire region is important. We do that at SMUD. Many people say, why are we going to provide a letter of support for an attraction in Placer County? But we realize that someone who cites in Roseville may have half their employees live and be our customers in Sacramento County, and it really is a very fluid environment. And so we stand ready to partner with Sacramento County and the team there as you go forward to implementing this. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jim. And thank you to SMUD generally, and I'm glad you ended on the partnership note. We feel mutual, mutually about the great working relationship that we have with our local utility over several decades. And as has been mentioned, you know, again, Metro Air Park would not be the success that it is and will continue to be if not for that great partnership with SMUD. I can cite, and so can Mr. DeFonte, cite several examples where we problem solve together to, again, make that an attractive place to do business. So I'm glad you're here, and thank you for your continued working relationship with us. Some final comments from me, if everyone will indulge. I want to thank first Crystal. Again, thank you so much, not just for your focus on the strategic plan and bringing this forward, managing the consultancy contribution, but for just being a great head of economic development. We got to know each other a bit last year when we went to Seoul, South Korea, on an economic development mission with GSAC. And I could tell that you have a great, great professional passion for what you do and comes across very profoundly, not just in the context of what we're considering here today, but when each of us has a question or a prospect or needs a problem that requires economic development's intervention, you are right there willing to assist. So I just want to publicly express my thanks to you for what you do. And then, David, appreciate this. We are going to hear back, is what I understood, from the consultants to see a more refined work product. One of the things that I was noting as we concluded the presentation on recommendations is there could very well be some additional cost to the county for implementing and executing some of the things that are being recommended. So one of the things I would like to understand, and maybe not with a very fine, sharp pencil, but with a pencil at the next time we hear back on this, is kind of a rough estimate of what we think some of these things may require in terms of budget allocation or personnel needs or, you know, and I want us to be honest with one another, what, you know, what that means in terms of investment to help, again, implement what is a deliberate effort to be as attractive as we can in Sacramento County to do business.
We'll do that.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item?
That would be county executive comments.
Real quick. This is actually an action item. We just had a resolution attached that, you know, captures at a very high level. We just want to make sure we're on the right path before we take that next step. And we got a lot of great feedback today. If you agree with...
Thank you, Dave. Chair will move the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
I think, I think Dave is going to be your temporary replacement next time you're out.
He helped me out. Yeah, thank you, Dave. Thank you. Now we're on county executive comments.
I don't have any comments other than to thank you guys for your time today and think, and I agree 100% with your comments about Crystal. She's a fantastic director and has been doing great things with economic development and Sacramento County. I rely on her tremendously with all the different partnerships and things that we do, and she does a great job. So thank you for those comments.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, next item?
That would be board of supervisor comments.
That's our chance to chime in with comments. Looking to my right, looking to my left, seeing none. All right, with that, if there's no further business before this board, we stand adjourned.